Right. By all the meeting of the White Lake Library Board of Trustees. Uh, to order at six point five, January twenty one. Let's begin with the slide of the lead. One nation to the flag, not the state or our. And then to the language, which is what you said, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone? Go on.
Uh, Vice President Richard McGlue.
Present.
Secretary Karen Wines, present. Treasurer Gwendolyn Newton, present. Trustee Eric Shotwell.
Present.
And trustee Carrie Francis.
Present.
Uh, President Jennifer Schultz is absent, excused, and Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosen are in attendance.
Well, we have. I think. Are we even know what? We know.
No. We need the agenda.
I wasn't doing.
Yeah. Yeah, uh. In a, made a motion to approve the agenda before we start.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? You guys had it. Anyway. It's now time for public comment. Do you have any public comment? Any comments? Comment? No. Then we will move on. For presentations. We have presentations today. My presentations. Then we move to the pool of participants. Most of them are in front of you. Have not been reviewed.
I will make motion to approve the December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes as written. I will second.
The discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? You guys have it. Moving on, the officer report, the presidential report is, uh, Jerry's. How today, by president's report, I'll only, uh, make the, uh, comment that, well, at first, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. Uh, and also thank place and I'm wearing a mask ahead of contact that I heard about three minutes before I walk in, uh, in, so. For everyone's safety. The holiday.
Thank you, man.
Shakes a little hard to hear, so I'll try and speak up. That's all, that's, that's my support. Uh, secretary is supporting.
Uh, nothing.
Treasurer is supportive.
I mean, if everybody would look at the fund balance sheet. Make your things questions. Um, we'll do some things that we'll go over later in the, in the finance report.
Now, we mentioned summary.
Alright, yeah, it will go over the investment summary, um, and I was sure she paper when we, um, through the finance committee because we met. For some. Basically for what we're gonna do for the year. Um, but if, if everybody's had a chance to look over this and give them questions. Profit loss for the year or our fund balance sheet. And if not, I'm gonna present, I'm gonna motion to, um. Why can't I remember how we do this?
Except the bills. Except the bills for payment from the, um. I think that's all I need to say is accept the bills for payment.
Mm-hmm. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? You guys have it.
I have one quick question about the finances. Um. We had that ACH that was rejected or that check this, this week that was rejected. Was it because it had two asterisks on them?
No, it was my fault. That was the extra check that we asked Joe to do.
Oh, fly. Yeah.
And then.
And I had to be.
I just missed putting it into positive page, so that was completely me.
Alright, thank you. So that.
So it worked as.
Because I thought, what's wrong with this?
It worked perfectly.
It did. Yeah.
We will.
And the ACH debit block is working fabulous.
It is.
Yes.
Yeah, it's great. Really enjoy them. I've recommended it to people, actually, including my husband and his business.
I've been recommending. It's really important. So I don't have anything else for the treasury.
And so on to.
So are you doing the other stuff under finance?
Yes, I am.
Oh, well, then I'm gonna have to do that later.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so on to the library director's report.
Okay, um, fairly busy month, uh, actually. Uh, some good news under administration. You'll see that by credit union is gonna give us $2,000 towards the sponsorship of our little literacy backpacks.
Nice.
Very excited about that. Uh, Emily won a scholarship to cover her cost for PLA.
Yay.
Yay. Um, DSLRT was, uh, completed and received and we've got, we got the report. Uh, state aid was completed. That's our little thing every year. Uh, earlier than last year. The, um, ADA Ballard post, which is gonna be going outside, uh, has been ordered and received, so as soon as it's a little nicer outside, we'll be able to.
So what the ADA power post?
So this is what's been the friends.
I think.
Their mission. Yeah, they were like, this has to happen. So, um, it's a post that we can put, um, I talked to Jen, we're gonna put it just near the, um, bench, just outside, uh, so if someone wheels up, they can push that. It is, um, wifi, so it'll have another sensor on the door, so that will open it. So just in case that doesn't work, we'll still have the electrical, uh, but it's a lot less money, but it still solves the problem.
Okay, that's what I thought it was.
And it opens both doors.
It opens the one door, which is the same door that the electrical would open.
Okay, so you still would have to go over and hit the other one to get.
When you get in, yes, we can look into getting something that would be an additional, but I have to look into that too because.
At least they're inside at that point, so out of the elements.
So it's, um. Not work, how does the post get electric? Just, was it a battery?
Yeah, it's some sort of battery.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Looking into that. Nate's gonna look at it, and if he can't do it, then our electrician that I've been working with, I'm gonna have him because he's the one that recommended it to me.
Yeah.
So I'll have him take a look at it, see how that all goes down. Um, staff performance reviews and goal setting is, uh, going on right now. It's getting finished up. Audit has started, um, meeting and working with Able Eyes, uh, for our virtual tour. Um, that's gonna be filmed, uh, next Thursday. They're gonna be here for about four hours, from about six AM to ten AM, uh, filming the building while people are not here, so that, um, we could get a nice virtual tour. There'll be hotspots, uh, in the sense that when you come, when you go into it, um, and you're seeing it, there'll be different spots you can click on and it will, it'll show you, it'll tell you something, um, about the library, so we're working on that.
Nice.
Yeah, we're excited about that. Um, and, uh, like I said, Karen and I did, uh, deliver the, um, CIA tip resolution uh, to the township clerk, and I did receive confirmation, um, in writing that he received it. Kim is, uh, participating in MLA discussion on de-escalating and diffusing problems in public libraries. Our stats are looking good overall. Director connections, I have been accepted into a year-long cohort, um, for, it's called the Post Pandemic Public Library Project. Um, this is with, uh, the Library Michigan, U of M School of Information.
Oh.
And the, um, IMLS Institute for Museum and Library Services. So we'll meet once a month, uh, and I'm excited to kind of learn from them. One of the things that's, one topic that's gonna be is media relations, how to talk to the media, uh, especially in times of crisis. Uh, and so to learn from that, it's gonna be one of, just one of the many things that I'll learn, but I'll keep you abreast of what I'm learning each month. Actually, Friday, uh, even though I'm taking off Friday, um, I have the first meeting with them. So I'm gonna have to do that. It is virtual, but I'll be in Frankenmuth, so I'm gonna have to find a spot somewhere in Frankenmuth to attend my first meeting. Uh, let's see, I made a partnership with, um, I was approached by Waterford Youth Assistance to, um, partner on a program with Oakland County Youth Assistance and Oakland County Children's Village, uh, for a truancy intervention type of program for parents, and we did do that. We had around thirteen parents attend, and it was, so they were very happy with the results. Um, apparently, they weren't able to get into other libraries to do this type of partnership, and this is, youth assistance is close to my heart because I used to do no by youth assistance. I was the, uh, programming, uh, person there, so, um. Yeah, I was very happy they came to me.
This was with Lana for youth assistance.
Yes, and I'm also still working with Huron Valley Youth Assistance, and so this is, they just asked me and I said, yes, I don't want to turn any, any type of agency away, um, especially because it is also Oakland County. Um, we hosted the Optimist Club here for a presentation and a library tour. And let's see, facilities, just normal things going on with getting our boiler chemicals checked and the, um. Our second line on our AT&T alarm went, was, went dead, and so AT&T came out and it was something out at the road, so they fixed that. Uh, the lighting equipment has arrived, and I'm just kind of doing a back and forth with the electrician to set a date to get that installed. Nate and I are re-meeting with vendors to review supply pricing. Um, we've had a number of vendors just cold call us, uh, regarding costs on like toilet paper and paper towel thing, and they're kind of going back and forth, which is kind of nice because the prices keep going lower, so we're gonna try to figure out the best one, so that's, that's working on that.
What do we use today?
Um, we use Allied. Uh, and Boya and Johnson Controls has been out to, uh, tweak the, uh, and maintain the HVAC, which you can tell in here, it's actually a little bit more. So I was very happy to get that. Get that done. Friends, our wish list items are being ordered. Uh, they are increasing their social media presence. Um, they're going to be changing out their Facebook, so if you follow them on Facebook, look to see, they're going to announce when they're going to have a new Facebook page, so look for that, uh, and then they're going to start an Instagram. So they're, they're out there, they're doing their thing. Uh, and they also, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, check out the artists, uh, that they are exhibiting. Uh, there's one out there right now, and it's, I actually happen to know the young artist, uh, because she's a former student of mine, not an art student, but a former student. Um, but they already have four artists that are lined up to, to spotlight, so.
How long does that go on?
Um, it's, goes on like every couple of months, they'll change them out.
I think it's every month, they said, because.
Oh, did it?
Carol said she has the first four months.
Okay.
And then, um, just for anybody who might be listening, a lot of those artists are selling their work, and this person already sold one of them. The prices are right on the wall. Yeah, so it helps those artists out, let everyone know that the artwork is for sale.
Are these artists local?
Yeah, these are people mostly from White Lake, yes.
So probably part of the Huron Valley Art Association.
They might be.
They are, no. Okay.
Yeah. Um, under adult services, our, we relaunched the first yarn club, and this was a knitting and crochet club for adults. They did this pre-two thousand and twenty and brought it back, and that is well attended, so I'll tell you what, we have, uh, a community of knitters. They're really like that here. Uh, Maria's doing a complete inventory of all the items in the ideal lab. We wanna see what items we may want to move to checkout, put up into checkout, uh, and other items that may, may just want to have out as opposed to in the cabinet, so that they're more seen and more used.
Well, one of the things too, I was thinking about, I remember one day and I thought, I love all the cake pans, but they take up an awful lot of, um, real estate.
Yeah.
You know, is there some place that we can do that, that's easy to see what we have, but doesn't take up that much real estate on the wall?
Yeah, you're, you, you, you're, we share the same thoughts on that one. I know that they're going to, if they haven't already, they're gonna be taking the holiday ones, uh, and finding storage for those, so that is a one of these specifics, so it might help, but it does take up a lot of real estate.
Also, um, because I checked out one and noticed that they've combined, so instead of, if you wanted to make a tiered cake, instead of getting this size, this size, and this size of the round cake, they've put them all in one thing now, so that helps. Get rid of a little of that too. Yeah, I took one out and I went, ooh, I get all of them.
All those choices, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we had a patron comment that she loves our yoga program time slot and wanted, uh, the presenter Debbie to know that she really enjoys the program and hopes that it continues to be successful. We have added, um, Amy has added an evening's, uh, yoga program because it was requested, and so kudos to her on that. Um, I also have, I'm gonna pass this around. This was a nice comment. It says on my desk one day, I'll just hold that up. It says, uh, please read if you have a moment with a little smiley face, uh, and to the White Lake Library librarians. I know this is kind of silly and doesn't make much sense, but I want to apologize for how overdue these books are. It's completely unacceptable at this point. I'm honestly ashamed. Not a great excuse, but I've really been struggling with things lately, and things have just been slipping through the cracks. Again, I'm very sorry. Also, thank you so much for everything you do for libraries. They're such an essential part of our community, and they wouldn't be what they are without you, heart.
Oh.
So I, et cetera, so I thought that was very nice and anonymous, so.
So you don't know how overdue they really were.
Um, and so youth services, they're doing a great job. We, they've added new beanbags to the youth room, uh, and I've already seen teens using them, and the WEU now is hooked up to the teen TV, so they can check that out inside and play it here. Uh, winter reading bingo is kicked off. Uh, Emily is doing great things. She's doing, uh, gone with T L N Youth and Teen Services Committee, and she's done discussions on homeschooling groups and video game collections. Emily is gonna start going to Dublin Elementary monthly to do storytime outreach for two preschool classes. And, uh, Emily also submitted an application and was approved again. This is another year for the Oakland County Parks Recreation.
Nice.
And so again, we'll get our inflatables and our climbing tower.
Wonderful.
Which is important because this year, we're not only gonna have our SRP badge, but we'll be having our five-year building birthday.
Oh, I see that. Do we have a date for that?
Uh, it is. I gotta think about this now. Okay, it's, we have two dates because we have a first date and a second date, and it got kind of messed up because of my issue, which I'm gonna tell you at the end of the meeting. Um, I think it's August seventh or, or August twenty-first.
But it is in August.
It is in August. Yes. We're kind of combining the two. Um, staff anniversaries, uh, Deb, Deb Tenbush, two years, and our own Emily, three years.
Okay.
And lastly, technology, we got our new server installed. Our old one was kind of dying, dying off. This will help our envision where.
Then Bush wasn't, she's only here occasionally now.
She's stopping. Yeah, so she's, we still put, we still.
Been here a lot longer than two years.
It's almost like two years.
I thought so too. I was so surprised.
Really? I actually have had people come up and complain that they miss her.
Oh, yes.
Got she's here a lot longer than you.
Okay. Uh, and your computers have been ordered and will start arriving soon, okay? Um, the twenty twenty-two year review is, was added here for you to see. Let's start promoting. Lots of good numbers there. And then I do have a question on the stats, so as you can see, we're finishing up twenty twenty-three on some of these, so we have twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three, and are you okay with us removing twenty nineteen, at least on the ones that show the five years, and to make room for twenty twenty-four?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
The loads are gonna throw up the informations, like, you know, still.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, in that sense, yeah. That's not a problem.
Looking at the year review, we have ninety-five hundred part of it.
Okay.
Is that we have roughly thirty-one thousand um citizens in the town, so we're like thirty-six percent of, of the town.
If those are, if those are still, um, active, I've asked, um, Heather about this. They're, they believe they're active as of when we came here five years ago.
T L N recently cleaned up the car, so.
These are, it's. These are, the statistics are current active, current cars that are in good standing and not expired.
So how long do they, are they for expiration?
Three years.
Three years, isn't it? It's longer than that.
Three years.
No, every three years, you gotta bring back your driver's license.
That's a T L N policy.
Really? So these are ninety-four hundred that are active.
Unless you do the one.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, because now if I do one.
They're current.
Not expired.
So they're less than, they've been, they've renewed within three years. Okay, that's great.
These are great numbers.
Those are great numbers. I, I agree, knowing what I've seen from other libraries.
Yeah, you have to remove the kids under the age of five, though, too, when you do the, what their population is.
Yeah.
You know, it's not until they're in grade school that they get a library card, because you gotta be able to write.
And you have to sign your name.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, it's a good number. It is a very good number.
You only keep all of our community.
Yeah.
I think I'm guilty of not renewing. I, I, I just looked and see Detroit, check something out last Monday. Wouldn't let me.
Yeah.
So I think I may have to come back and renew.
I think we had this conversation there.
I really think I bet there's more reference questions than that, just you know, if it gets really busy and stuff, do they really get every one of them?
They try.
I know, but I just think it's probably a higher number than what is shown, just because.
Yeah, so this seventy-two thousand business of the library that's coming through the door. Yeah.
I think it's also interesting that your, um, number of people attending programs is slightly higher than that of cardholders, so that means you're reaching out beyond your regular patrons and your official cardholders to some degree.
Program visits.
Oh, gotcha, visits.
Yeah.
It really is a program.
So it's people who come regularly.
Yeah.
So I would say something like Karen could have, you know, be, um, you know, just, she could be like fifty of those people. Or maybe more, you know?
That's also.
No, because it's more than one, um, program per day. Yes.
And that is an impressive number.
It is, yeah. The amount of programs.
Right, so like I do tailwagon tutors on Sat-, you know, like a couple Saturdays a month, I have some regulars that are always here, so they would, each time they come, they would become as a, as a participant.
Well, I, as a little story to this was, I was filling out state aid, and what happens is, is you, you fill it out, you work on it, you come back to it, you fill it out, and then right before you submit, you, you verify, and so it will go through and it'll kind of check it over for you, and if anything, kind of this alarm bellish to them, it'll kind of highlight. What's this? We need an answer. And one of the questions was, is why our programs and amounts and our attendance went up? And it did, it just, we're, we're still kind of coming rolling out of COVID, and between last year, which would have been twenty twenty-one, because I just was filling out for twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Um, so between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, it went up, and so I anticipate twenty, when I report on twenty twenty-three, it will be even higher, so.
And these are great numbers.
Mm-hmm, they really are.
Do you have any information on how many days of the year the library is open in twenty twenty-three?
I can calculate.
I'd love to know, like, just the average number of visits per day.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's, that'd be an interesting metric, because that, those numbers obviously fluctuate a little bit every year because of closures.
Actually, T L N should be able to give us that information, just on average. Who, who did? The door count. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a door count. What, it's the software through the door count, should be able to give us that.
I think I know.
That's physical visits.
The study rooms are really used a lot. That's a good, good.
And just in the last, if you've noticed in the last two weeks, a lot of teens with final exams. Um, and even our coffee, hot tea, hot cocoa, it's quite a bit too, so.
Dumb, dumb question about the door count. Do we count drive-ups in the door count?
Yes, by hand, so, um, not, so now we can't do the drop. It would just now be the drive-up.
Got it. I'll make sure we're kind of put that somewhere.
Yeah. We could get something that like would be a car counter so that you could get not only the drive-up, but you could get the book drop, so anyone that drove up to use that, you could get that.
Makes enough of a difference to be worth calculating, but.
But just from personal experience, I've used the drop-off unregu-, you know, pre-regulately, so.
Yeah.
My viewers.
Yep, I think that's, um.
The counter would also tell you when people are doing, uh, but when, when people are doing, doing how much certain library hours.
Sure.
Where they just, they don't wanna, you know, and, you know, two in the morning, you know.
After Taco Bell. That's, that's all. Okay.
Is that the end of the report?
Yes, it is.
Finance committee met this month. Um, as most of you know, we get most of our taxes in, in January, uh, starting in December, and then go through January and February, we might get a few, look with them. And, um, Mark, so, um, if you look at this sheet paper, okay, this, I, I did this this afternoon. I wanted to make sure it was as relevant as possible, and so Eric, this sheet. Okay, um, you'll see the checking balance as of this afternoon. So as you can see, it's, you know, pretty happy, um, and we try to keep that, um. We try to keep it so we have like three months, at least three months of, um, of, um, expenditures that can be covered, right? So it's more than that right now. Um, so Jen and, um, April and I looked at what we need to do for the next year. Last year, we got into a lot of, um, let's do a three-month CD here, a four-month CD, and a six-month CD, and it was very, very hectic. So, um, talking with Joe, we're gonna try to do as much as we can that is, um, is a laddered CD approach that we do twelve months at a time. Some of them that we're not necessarily gonna do that way, so what I'm proposing today, um, and I just, and, and the ones that don't, aren't crossed off, that was the last quarter that came in, um, that were in, it shows what we did with them, but the ones on the bottom that don't have a cross through them, these are the ones that, like, the, um, J P Morgan Chase, we made the decision in December what we were gonna do with that, and, um, we're gonna do, um, a nine-month, I think, you know what? Can you go back and look at the meeting?
I can, I've got it right here.
Because I think I looked at this, and I think we put twelve months, and I'd like to, and I think.
It says at a term no less than six and not to exceed fifteen.
So I looked at that again, um, in the last couple of days, and our best interest rate that we can get from them, um, is the nine-month renew, and that nine-month will, um, take us through towards the end of the year where we might actually, you know, I think it, we might actually need the money, so I'm gonna do that nine-month renew, um, with the interest, and right now it's four point eight-eight, okay? So we're gonna roll that over, and then, um, Flagstar, that one was um, from last Ju-, um, June, that's gonna expire in, um, March, and I probably need to make a motion on that, because I don't think we, we didn't do anything. I need to make the motion, I didn't include that, to move that to checking. Okay, so that's gonna be an extra motion today, alright?
Okay.
Um, and then, um, Genesis, we already moved that money. The next one that's Flagstar.
So that's part of the, the one oh eight is already in the.
It is, we, we, um, that was invested on eleven-sixth of twenty twenty-three. And then Flagstar on. And then Flagstar on twelve seven twenty twenty three, we did, we um renewed that with the interest. At Flagstar, so the bottom three are the ones that we're proposing for this year, Rich, and you see on the notes to the right, it says new with the twenty twenty four revenue. So um. Jen, because, you know, we still have to go under F D I C rules, right? Um, and um. So at the credit union, it's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're recommending, we already have a Genesis CD there of a hundred and eight. So we're gonna recommend that we do a seven-month CD, because that was the best. Rate, now, and I'll say the motion in a minute, that was the best rate we could get, was a seven-month one for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Then we want to move two hundred thousand dollars to Lake Michigan for twelve months. And um, two hundred thousand dollars to um, a Flagstar SEDAR. For twelve months as well. Okay? So as you can see, I think I ordered these two in the order that they will expire. So we move this five hundred and forty thousand dollars, we'll have, we'll have half of that, it's gonna be left in the account. We've got about five hundred thousand dollars left that we're waiting on taxes, tax-wise, so that five hundred thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna take us um, through. Um, February, March, and April, okay, so then we have this other five hundred thousand dollars. And the two hundred thousand dollars from Chase, I mean, from the Flagstar that's gonna expire in um, March, and I'm, we're recommending that we move that just into checking. So that should, those numbers should take us through the summer. Okay? And then um. Because, because we're moving these out at twelve, um, most of them out for twelve months. We still should have enough, we should, still should have enough cash, in the way that the sweep accounts have worked as, as money markets, we can have up to thirty five million in those that are F D I C insured. So we're not too concerned about it, but that pays our lowest interest, so that's why we want to move to something, CDs that make a little bit more interest on.
So my question is, yes, well. So we would be um.
We're spending.
We, we're gonna take one sort of fifth, uh, five hundred and forty thousand. I'm sorry, no.
Yes, we'll be taking five hundred and forty thousand out of checking. In February and moving.
Or is it?
If you look at the bottom three, Rich.
Oh, okay, five, yeah, okay. Yeah, so we're gonna take five hundred and forty out of checking, so we'll be at four, six, four.
We'll have about, we'll actually have five hundred.
Because the rest of the tax money comes in.
Yes, and so we're gonna, it's gonna end up being, because we're still waiting for tax money, and most of it's gonna come in in January or February, well, in February, we're still waiting on a half a million dollars in tax money.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes, right, that's the piece we're missing right now, so, so that should take us, that really should take us through six months.
Okay.
Okay, what we have in the bank today. What we are gonna get in taxes, and that two hundred thousand dollars at the end of March, that's going to expire, that's um, I'm gonna agree. That money should take us through what we need to get through for the summer. Okay, so that should take us through the next really eight months, and then we have um. We have the one coming up in Genesis. Okay? Um, and then.
We'll do that for the seven months.
Right. I don't know, I'm still, I've still, here's the thing, if we find that we're tight to any of these CDs, we can um, take money out without a um penalty, we just, we will lose that quarter. Interest, unless we take it out of someplace like, you know, Genesis or someplace, or Lakes, they um, do their interest monthly. So we're really not gonna be behind if we decide that we have to take some money out earlier. Um, and, and I looked at this and I thought, do we really want to have all this money that's coming due next February? But those were the best rates that we had. So we talked about it, I think that's what we'd come up with when we were meeting, we thought we had the, the cash, that would satisfy our cash flow. Um, and if it doesn't, um. Oh, I know, I think we, we could always take money out of this um, Chase one as well, because it's gonna, it's gonna come do, we're gonna do that one for nine months. So that will be, that will probably be what, December, uh, October?
Where is the Chase one?
The Chase one is coming to at the end of the month, and we're renewing that. So it's in gray, Rich. Yeah. So I just, you know, we want to make sure we have the cash flow, but we're also looking at making the, the most amount that we can off of the interest.
Would it make sense? Maybe we, maybe we're more conservative on this, but um. Uh, the uh. The whole back half of the. The Chase one. Or actually. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, October, November, December, December, we start getting tax money in.
Right. Well, and we have two that are coming, but we have, so also, Rich, in December, we have um. If you can, you can see Genesis got, and we have one coming due in Genesis in December, and one coming to it Flagstar in December as well.
Right, all in December, so, so coming. Um, coming up to that, that I'm gonna worry about the deal, like, October, November, where. So, but we, we will know that, and we've, and we've got something, the Genesis. You know, will be coming due in. Um, in September, in the hundred and forty, so that could help us.
Right. So, yeah, let's see. What'd you say we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have another like five hundred and fifty thousand? Five hundred and fifty thousand that's coming in.
Five hundred and fifty two eight twenty nine sixty six.
So, um.
Give or take a penny, give or take a penny. Protect, contacts is coming.
So we need that, so.
You could always do the Chase one a little less if that.
Well, we've got others that are coming due, though, this year.
Right, we do, um.
Yeah, you've got the Flagstar in March.
Mm-hmm, right, um.
Could, uh. And that's.
And the Genesis in September.
I sort of agree, Rich, I've been thinking about this all day, and I'm thinking, are we gonna run short?
Yeah, so where, where the year do we, where we go negative, that's, you know, or almost negative.
You've got.
In the, in the, the checking, um. So, I mean, it. It might make sense to.
Okay, so what we're looking at putting in the checking today, it's gonna, it, it's gonna take us through, um, if we spend on an average of a hundred and eighty thousand, which we actually don't spend quite that much on, on average. But that's what I was figuring out, Rich, but that's, I think we're only, I think last year we spent an average of a hundred and thirty nine or a hundred and forty three thousand a month, okay? If we spent higher than that at a hundred and eighty, because I'm trying to be conservative, um, that takes us through seven and a half months. Okay? Um, so, um.
We don't have a meeting. So, we have the Flagstar coming. Uh, do.
I'm including, I'm including the Flagstar in that money.
In that one.
Yes.
So that gets us. So.
So I'm including Flagstar in that, in that money, because that's the money that we're gonna have available, because we usually have money come available in summer, and we don't this year. Um.
Right. So, that gives us. Seven and a half months in.
Right.
Middle of June, middle of August.
Middle of August, and, and then we only have a hundred and forty thousand coming due in um. Well, actually, we have a hundred and forty thousand coming due at Genesis in September, and then um. And then we've got, and Chase would come due in November.
Yeah, so if.
We, we could decide to um. I could do this, I could do this, oh, shoot, let me look at something, hang on, we could do the C, the Flagstar SEDAR. We could do it for, I think, I wanna look at the SEDAR rates just a moment, okay? Because we could do the Flagstar SEDAR for two hundred thousand dollars, we could only, we could possibly do it just for um, six to eight months. Hang on.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and that.
And that would. Balance and value.
I've gotta find that SEDAR. Because we got it, I got it from Christie. Just one second, I'm looking. Okay, um, the SEDAR rates. It, it really, we could do um, a six-month. Right? Or if we want to do shorter than that, they also have a, um, they have a three-month. And that's what I think we did a couple of times, I don't know.
But if you said a six-month, that would get you around the middle of February, middle of July.
Right, and it, it, so we could do it as six months, the, the rate is so. The rate's actually a little bit better.
And by then, you know. You could then make a, you know, then you look at the situation at that point, when you're actually, what's, what expenses are. Are ahead and make a, you know, a decision there.
And I'm okay with that, Rich.
It might make sense to just for.
Yeah, I, I think.
Month by month.
You know, I think last year, um, oh, hang on. I think we were averaging about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a month, so. I think April and, and Jen and I thought we had this all worked out, but that's why we bring it to the board.
We at least have a good framework.
Yeah, those.
Right, and um. Yeah, see, if we only spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars a month, it takes us out nine months. And that's really what we were spending, but I was padding that because I wanted to make sure that we have.
I figured it makes sense to say, well, you know.
Yeah. So we'll do it for six months, we'll do that last one for, for six months, okay?
But then you get, get there, it might make sense to do it.
And I can always renew it again, we can always renew it again, right? So um, so that would come due in August, right? Okay.
Yeah, and then we don't have anything else that is. Coming due then, you know, it's more kind of clustered.
Okay.
You're about doing a six-month, you moved something. You know, to a, to a different.
Right. All right, I think we have it. And I'll make my motions. Yeah. And I appreciate, Rich, you thinking about it.
What we're here for.
That's. All right, are we ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Um, my first motion is to transfer a hundred and forty thousand dollars. From Flagstar Checking. To a seven-month CD at Genesis Credit Union in February.
A second.
Oh, in discussion. All, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. The eyes have it.
The second motion is to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from Flagstar Checking to a twelve-month CD at Lake Michigan Credit Union.
We have a second.
One second.
Welcome, driver.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, the eyes have it.
And the final motion is to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from Flagstar Checking to a six-month Flagstar SEDAR.
I've changed that to six-month, yep.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, the eyes have it.
Thank you.
I thought you said you were gonna add another one. You said you had something else for me.
No, because, because it was the, the Chase one, we had, it said six to twelve months, we're gonna do a nine-month one.
Okay, I thought you said there was something else on there.
That's it.
Okay.
Um, oh, no, there is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have one more. I apologize, thank you, Karen.
Yeah, that's what I don't have, so.
Um, I'm going to um. Because we didn't say what we're gonna do with the money that's coming due, that's maturing in March. So I make a motion to transfer the two hundred thousand dollar. CD that is coming due on March twenty ninth, the Flagstar that's coming to on March twenty ninth. To Flagstar Checking.
Second, Ben.
And it's going to checking?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Thank you for keeping me on.
I had a slot there.
Thanks for all your work on this and putting it together.
Oh, you're welcome.
While Joe's are nice, this is nice with having it divided and color-coded, and. This is what's happening here, this is what's going there, yeah.
Well, yes, and we need something pretty simplistic to get through the meeting, um, but if you look at, uh, Joe is very nice, um, because he takes the numbers that we give him. And then he does this um, investment summary, um, and it shows what we've done really since um, twenty, since um. October twenty twenty-two, when we started doing this program. Yes, and it shows you how, you know, we've done very well in um, interest and. You know, as long as CDs are like this, we should continue doing. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the strategic planning.
Okay, so I'm, I'm putting a couple of things under strategic planning, um. But next month, this will probably move to under directors' report, okay? Um, just a couple of things, the marketing plan is um. I gave that to a, our, the, our printer that does our newsletter, to have them print it, I don't want to print it in-house, because I don't want to drive up the cost and the use of our copy machine. So I got a quote from them, and it's very affordable to get about three hundred copies of that. Um, and they'll, it'll be a nice fold, just like our newsletter will be, so it'll be nice and glossy and pretty, so that will be coming soon. Um, otherwise, of course, it is on the website, so what you're gonna see here, as far as this, um, your next uh, spreadsheet. This is a representation of the goals document uh, for you to look at, I've tweaked it a little bit more, but uh. I know our, the three of us have kind of talked about the color. Issues on it, so I tried to make some improvements to make it a little bit more readable, um, you know, start throwing your suggestions at me, but um. Kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at here, as far as the columns are concerned, again, you know, you'll see the, the main goal, which you have your four main goals. And under each goal, you have your strategies that, you know, we worked on together, and then below that, you'll find the tactics. Um, under each tactic, you'll then have the year that it's gonna be worked on. You have the start date for that, which obviously, uh, you're gonna see one, one twenty-four on. For this year. Um, I'm starting to put in deadlines as staff, as we work through staff goals and determine how long it will take them to accomplish what they're, what they want to work on. So those, each month, you'll see more and more of those be added. Under status, um, each month, you'll see red. Which will indicate that was worked on uh, over the last month, uh, of course, when I am done with that, I'll switch that to black, and then the new stuff will go in as red, so you're not. It's a little, it'll be a little less confusing, um, and then to the right of that, you'll see who is responsible, so what staff members are working on that goal, and it's probably. Uh, sometimes it's gonna be one person, sometimes it's gonna be two, three, um. You know, maybe someone else is able to just do a little spot. You know, maybe someone else is able to just do a little spot of it, so I just wanna give everyone credit and make sure that they. You know, get on their what, what they've done, so it's a lot of, lot of moving parts. So with that, you'll see that some of the things that I had on the director's report, I mimic over here, and so those just to show you that. Um, stuff will start to come off the director's report and onto here because it's glorified. I don't see a point to having it on both. The idea is to shrink one and, not completely, but grow the other, um, so thoughts? Comments, um, this was kind of, I had started it one way, and then I. Uh, Amy helped me by giving me a past one that you guys had used. Uh, and I thought, you know what, I kind of actually liked that a little bit, so I did make some changes to match it, uh, but. Let me know.
Think it looks nice?
It will obviously get a lot longer and, as, as we go, but um.
Yeah, but some of these deadlines, you know, cause I actually really like this, and I like the deadlines on it, but some of these deadlines are not gonna be twenty twenty four.
Correct. Well, for the war, for the ones that are year one, they will be. Although I can't say that they'll ever come off of here, because as you'll notice, say. On where it was says year two on the very first one, sharing programming ideas and resources. Um, I've already put something on there because that's, that, we've talked about this, there's certain tactics on here that, while. It doesn't say I have to work on it this year, it's just a common thing that is part of what I do. So you probably will see things under different years because it was just an opportunity, um, but um, yeah.
It might be the, the, the focus thing. You know, okay, at this stage, we're gonna start focusing in on this, but maybe doing things ahead of that, but. Would make sense.
And some of them are gonna go on throughout the whole thing, expanding children's programs, we're not gonna stop that.
No, 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 no.
It's going to just keep going.
Right, and so.
That, that needs to be started now.
Yes, exactly, but the main thing with the deadline, that's more like the staff members. Goal, and I know that was important to Jen to make sure that we staggered and make sure that, and so you will see deadlines on there, but like next year, when I. When we restart this. Yeah, it'll be again, there might be some different deadlines, some different start dates, or you might see the same start date from twenty twenty four, but yet. Oh, we're doing this again, yeah, so it's ongoing.
Okay.
So as long as it's visible, the colors are good, um, and we'll just start filling this in.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice.
Cause we were. All right, that's it for um strategic plan.
Wanna talk about it?
Yeah, so. Policy committee, so we're working on a lot of different things on policy committee, and one of the things that came up recently because. Um, I introduced the um time off policies, and. They were, we did so much work on them that I couldn't possibly hand them over to policy committee. Without literally having a brand, you know, just a new one rather than a red lined one and the old. Um, it just, there's a lot of process and things like that, and so one of the things that came up that Gwen said was, well, why don't we reach out to. The attorney and see if we can get some boilerplate policies, and so we did, we did do that, we started that process, um. What they wanna give us is a list.
But that, but I, and I, and I thought I'd go back and, and ask Anne specifically, but I think that when she says that's the price per policy. They'll hand us the boilerplate for that price.
Yep.
Right, that's how I read it, is that how you read it, Eric?
Yes.
And so for that policy, so they have the policies, but they're not gonna just hand them to us.
Right.
So they have boilerplate policies, but they know we're gonna meet legal obligation, and then um, and the fee was like two hundred and forty five dollars policy.
Yep.
And I start thinking about that, I'm thinking by the time, all the time and effort the staff's putting into it, it's probably much cheaper for us in the long run. Really, to use that staff time elsewhere, and um, do we have it in our budget? Um, for legal fees to be able to do that this year, and I think we probably do.
We do have, what, one of the things that I've been budgeting for, for a couple of years now, thinking I was. Misguided to think I was gonna get through this a lot quicker than I did, was for a full review of our policy manual, which was gonna be a couple thousand dollars. So, so yeah, we could use it in that way, um, so our next step is, and that was for the public policies. Uh, Mike, who is the other attorney, uh, he's the one to reach out to for the personnel, and so we can get a list. From him for that, so that's where the policy committee is kind of at right now.
And, and we, and we sort of got to that point because we're looking at these different time off policies, and. There was a lot of discussion, you know, do we combine a lot of this stuff, you know, um, some of the things that we um offer are pretty outdated, some of the things that we offer are. Pretty, you know, they're somewhat excessive to what other, you know, um, people receive, and I'm like, this needs to really be looked at, and. Do we, um, and what does, what is it? You know, going back to the lawyers, what's, what's legally? We don't wanna put a bunch of stuff in here, then it's gonna have to be completely changed because we didn't write it up right, and um. And the lawyers should be able to help us with that, and I thought, well, instead of editing what we're doing, why don't we look at their boilerplates? So I thought they were pretty inexpensive, um. They didn't have a few that I was really hoping that they would have, and so I, I'm gonna send back, I thought I'd send in a note, like, they don't have a data, a data privacy. Policy.
Yeah, that one was surprising.
I was like, where's your data privacy policy, and so I'm gonna ask that one specifically, you know, because I was really hoping for one that we wouldn't have to create.
Yeah, cause it's, I've been looking at some and it's.
Think from a library perspective?
It's heart and mind.
Yeah, they, they.
Um, actually, I did find some, Rich.
Well, they're out there, no, but I, but it's not a common thing in libraries.
Um, actually, we, um, uh, there's quite a few libraries, there's quite a few libraries that have been audited on it.
Yeah.
So i- it's gonna become an.
Yeah, it's becoming, but it hasn't yet, so, so about five years.
Right. Right, so there was, I took a niche, niche academy class on data privacy for libraries, and it was very interesting, and there's a couple of. Really huge libraries that have um, some very in-depth data policy, um, data privacy policy. And they were audited, and that's how they, you know, improved theirs, and I thought, okay. I just really expected to find from our lawyers that there was already something out there in the state of Michigan that would really would, would help us.
Well, especially because, yeah, I took that one too, and those are the ones I was going to look at to see, but what's interesting about the data privacy is it will eventually, right, it will eventually become down to that. Because even when I do the annual insurance renewal, right now, it, they're just asking more of as a survey. Like, what are your different data privacy things that you do, um, and so, cause I worked with our insurance agent on it. And uh, but it's, you can tell that in the next few years, that's gonna be.
And one of them, and I don't know, because I'm, I don't, I, we don't have a policy book in front of us, that was um required by law, that I, I don't know if I've ever seen as a retention policy. I'm gonna, you, you know, okay, so like emails.
Right.
There legally, there's retention policies on those.
Yeah.
And that was, that was one that we legally are required to do, and I thought, do we have a potential policy?
That's, that was on my list to look into and to, looking through this year to see, cause I wanted to keep us up to date.
So we need to make sure that we hit the ones that we might not have, that, that um were legally required to do financial policy. I know we have an investment policy, um, and I've read it, but I can't find my copy of it. So I, you know, and we didn't, when, and the last time that was updated, I think was two thousand and five.
Ouch.
I think the, the one, the, the, the copy I read was two thousand and five. And we're required to have by law an investment policy.
Makes sense.
Yeah. We are following what I read last year, Rich, but now I can't find, I don't have my hands on the original copy, but yes. Before we got all into the CD um investments, and we were looking at some of the other investments, I, I did read it very carefully to make sure that we were doing what we're supposed to be doing. So.
Yeah, so.
But it might save a lot of staff time as well. It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, yeah, it's.
So it'll be interesting to see with the HR, the lawyers on the HR side.
Some of the advantages of the work, it, it encultures the, the practice of the policy.
Correct.
So there's, there's a, you know, there's, it's not just a straight, oh, I can buy it, versus, but how do you? How does it become part of it, how do, you know, how do you make sure that it, it doesn't sit on the shelf?
Well, we're still gonna have to take some time, there's still gonna have to be some modification, really thinking about it, but not as in-depth as when we started looking at the. Um.
It's not a modification that I'm worried about, it's the living, the, the policy, it's, you know. It's, you know, when, when people go, wait a minute, what about the retention policy? You know, in the, in the day to day.
But I don't think we should be creating it from.
Oh, no, no, we shouldn't, yeah.
That was my point.
I agree, but I'm saying there's value in the, in the work, in terms of beginning that enculturation process of that policy becoming. How we do things, and not the doctrine of.
Most corporations, and I don't, and we probably don't do this as, as a library, cause we're so small, but most corporations require you to take the training once a year. You know, like when, where I worked, you know, and I'm sure where you worked, you had to, once a year, you had to say that I've read all this material. I understand this material, I understand our data retention policy, you know, our record retention policy, our data privacy policy, you know, those are annual. Training programs.
We right now have them sign. When they receive, when they receive it, they have to sign that they've read it, at least for our HR, our personnel policy manual, um. But to say, go to what Rich was saying is, while, yeah, it does take a long time, and I do think with getting the boilerplates. I still wanna have staff, just look at it, and you know, say, within the legality of it, how does this work for us? And are there some small areas, if we had to, that it can, you know, we can shift with it? Um, so that's gonna be something I wanna do with both the staff policy, the board policy, and with the attorney, just to say. Just in case, cause like you said, it's, it's gotta, it's gotta, they gotta have buy-in, they gotta work on the day to day, and so there was some value in going over some of it, and so I. Did, and some of the policies, yeah, they don't certainly have all the policies we have, so there still will be some that we'll have to go over, but. But I was happy with that suggestion, so.
And technically, the board is responsible for writing policy.
Yeah.
So the, the staff is, is doing, but the bylaws say it's the boards, the policies of the board's responsibility.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that we, uh, we have to write it, we have to.
Next, I still have, as, as director, as director, I still have to develop with, help with development, right? Cause I was curious.
Yeah, and, and, and there's just, there's a lot of work to policy, and if we can have some help, would be great.
So that was great.
And your staff can have some help, that would be great.
Okay, yeah. Okay. So that was it for policy.
There's a um, policy in here, and. You've read, is that part of the policy?
That's under new business.
New business, okay.
So this is uh, we all, we, our three D printer policy, uh, the board policy committee members have worked. Hard to make sure that we address, uh, we feel all the things that we need to address as far as three D printer, um. So please provide your feedback.
And if you haven't read it, you know, we might be, we might have to vote on it next month, cause I think it's something that we have to think about, because it's gonna be used more and more and more.
Yeah, I did read this, but it, it's very in-depth, which is very good, so I'm kind of. Wondering whether I need more time. I've read it, but I need to read it again and again, and though, but what if?
Yeah, we can't look at it that way, wouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things we added was uh clause E about physical consumption or ingestion.
That's what I was just looking at again, and I'm like, ooh, yep.
The concern is, since Michigan is legal for marijuana for recreational use, the concern is someone might create a bong or a pipe. But generally speaking, not only is that a bad idea, but also the resin from a three D printer melts at a much lower temperature, and it causes a health hazard as well. So we wanted to make sure no one's using it to put anything in their bodies.
And we looked at other people's, and one of the other, other libraries, one of the things we had, we cut a couple of them, I think Weapons was on there, Weapon Rep, Replicas.
Yeah.
But also intended for any commercial use, we don't want somebody coming in here and saying, it's actually much cheaper for me to do, um, you know. Production here at the library than it is to do it elsewhere, and we don't, and this, that's not the intent.
That's correct, yes. I like um, under the director designate refusing any request, and then that there's. You know, they can appeal that. So that's very important that that's in there.
Procedure.
Yeah, and then the fact that, you know, yeah, somebody walks in, you're going, oh, no, um.
Yeah.
Man, that, that first blush, this seems pretty comprehensive.
It does.
It does. And we can always modify it, right?
Absolutely.
Find that something's not.
And that's what'll happen, the more it's used, is that the librarians are gonna come back and go, we didn't think of this, you know?
Right, right.
Which is great, the part about, you, you can refuse it, and then. That might need to be some, something that goes into what we refuse to, to do.
You never know what they're gonna come up with.
Right.
Do we have the opportunity to review other libraries that have policy?
Yes, this is kind of pulled together from a number of different ones, and small, major, yep.
Yeah, I really like it, but like I said, every time I look at it, I'm seeing something else, I'm going, oh, yeah, that, oh, hadn't thought of that, that's very important. Yeah.
Well, i- i- if you, if you're happy with it as it is, we can, we could vote on it tonight, and we can always modify it.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and I like the idea of maintaining it sort of as a living document and modifying it as needed, given it's relatively new technology for the library.
We've had thirty eight prints, people, thirty eight prints since we.
Yeah, so we really need this out sooner rather than later, because of how many uses are being.
Okay.
So I decided to entertain a motion.
Uh, I'd like to motion to approve the special services and special collections uh policy to, is it I or?
I.
I on the three D printer, uh, as drafted.
All in, oh, any discussion?
All good?
All in, good?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was on the other, I was still writing.
Eyes have it.
Okay.
Red, the more friend memorandum of understanding.
Okay, so um, just a reminder, the friends have brought this to me some months ago, and uh, they, we went, you know, we went back and forth and worked on it. Uh, bringing it together, and I had said I would bring it to you for review and your thoughts, and uh, and, and. What you, what you want, what you don't, so. Let me know.
Which I think is important that we actually do, um, that we have an MOU with them, um. There's, there's a couple tiny little typos with this, you know, like punctuation. But one of the things that I thought, cause we got into this last year, um, that I think that we should call out is that. On the first page, we say the library, um, and I think I sent you back a note, we included Rich and Jen, um, that. I think it should be called out, cause we, um, so. Says the following will custom operating group between the Friends of the Light, um, White Lake Township Library, Friends, and the White Lake Township Library, Library. Many of these things, um, the library agrees to, who's representing the library in this? Okay, so because like, one of the things, there, there was a mention, and I have to go back and find it, about, um. There's, there was a couple different things, one was about um the wish list. The library agrees to supply the friends with a wish list that indicates anticipated needs for friend support. Um, usually the library board, the lucia, usually the friends board actually comes to the. Library board and talks them about what they're. Planning on giving to us and what their wish list is.
But it goes both ways, the library gives a wish list to the friends.
Right, but we don't, but the board should participate in that, and I know we have in the past, and that, it's not. Spelled out who the library is here, okay? And I know we have in the past and that it's not spelled out who the library is here, okay? So I think it's important as this board is responsible for monies, that it's important that the board is included in this. Um, so I, that was my questions, like, who's technically the library? Who's making the decisions for the library? Cause I, it's not real clear here. The other thing that I thought about is because we came across this last year. Is we say at the end of this, the last um. Bullet for the first page, library agrees to provide the friends with space in the library for bookstore, sorting, sorting books, sales and office needs. We don't say that we're supplying them with their um. Their internet access and their, in um. And in in their, in their network capability. And I think it's important because we got into that last year, you know, we moved that. Um, we moved some stuff away from them and then they couldn't get out to the internet and um, they really can't function without it. And we don't actually say that here.
So you'd like to be more specific?
I I think that it needs to be clear. I don't want somebody else later saying, well, we're saying that we're gonna provide off, you know. We're gonna provide you the space, because we say space, but we don't say that we're gonna provide them with um, network connection.
Okay.
You know, um.
In terms of the long term agreement. Um, I think you wanna take it up a level.
Okay.
Specifics.
Well, I'm concerned that people are going to look at it and say, that doesn't specifically say this in here, Rich, and then somebody will say, no to the friends.
Right, right. So you wanna have it so that it's um. But we uh, we're saying, I think. If you wanna have wording that's durable, that two years from now, the agreement is. Um, you know, doesn't need to be changed because all this is nothing. Um, there, so I think, you know, the, the technology side of it changes. You know, too fast for that.
Well, you have a good point, because we we might say office and technology needs. Right?
Sure.
That, that's pre-universal.
Right, yeah.
So you have a good point.
Yeah, so then, you know, the, the uh.
The library agrees to provide the friends with space. In the library for book storage, sorting book sales. Uh, and um, and office needs, but I think we need to say space and maybe, you know. Um, and tech, technology access.
I think access because I think we say, yeah, because that could go down the line of like computers or.
Right, we don't, right, right. So we could say space and technology access. Yeah, I I think you, but I thought we need to provide that they're in the building. It's it's hard, hard for them to function without.
Well, what are the touch points where um. We intersect. There, so we have, you know, um, the library's mission is this, the friends' mission is this. And so there are, then from that, there are logical, you know, touchpoints, so the uh, the life, the. We like the friends to book, book sales and and we provide to make sure that. So there's, so we're giving, we're making face within our overall mission. Uh, we're making space available for them to accomplish. Um, there and we're real. Um, have a mutual. Trust of each other or something to that effect. But uh, you know, to take it from, so. The, they need the space and the technology to accomplish, you know, so maybe breaking out that. Um, that, usually, because that, how they look like book sales. May not be a thing in twenty years. And so, you know, but it might be.
Well, we can't plan for everything in the future. I mean, these are, this is gonna change.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's all I'm saying is that it will, it will change. Let's have a frame, you know, establish a framework. That has flexibility to, you know, encourage the. The cooperation between the the two entities to deliver more.
A- and one of the things, and you've got points, Rich, because things will change. One of the things that I've done, I've done, I've done thousands of memos of understandings with. Um, clients and with other groups within a corporation that I've worked with. And we, and those memos of understanding are usually dated and have a, and have a beginning and. So, you know, we could, we could actually date this and say this is, and we could say. This memo of understanding is in effect from the date that it's signed to twenty four months and it's reviewed again.
Yeah, and we even did with steering committee groups relatives, from some relative to some grant work I did um, years gone by, we would did an annual. With every single steering committee member, so just food for.
Because I mean, yeah, they're just memos of understanding and where, so everybody's on the same page and we know what the expectations are. And Rich has got a really good point, things change. So, you know, it's, it really doesn't hurt to to review annually.
Right, and yeah, it can be the exact same one next year. Yeah, nothing has changed. You're signing it again, but for it to be, it does have to be signed.
Or or build in, rather than having it expire, have a, an annual review.
But it really needs to be signed annually. You know, it, it, because if not.
So it should be signed by their secretary and by our secretary. Right?
Mm-hmm, because that will change annually too, so. If the agreement, you know, the agreement's made, then they sign and. A particular month is picked that before that, everybody goes, yep, still good, and then sign it again. That would make it.
I'll add dates and signatures.
Yeah.
And that formalizes the whole process.
Right, because if not, they're going, we have this, and everyone's going, really? Where'd you get that? It's no signature.
That lady who signed that.
Yeah, but I mean, if there's no signatures, anybody would have written this up.
Absolutely.
Okay, so what I have right now, just to make sure I'm clear on it, is uh, the last bullet point on the first page. The library agrees to provide the friends with space in the library for book storage. And sorting book sales and office and technology access.
Okay. I'd say office needs and technology access. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
That works.
And we're gonna put a date on it, um.
You know, it also seems that we should establish a um, how. How we integrate or how we um, formally communicate. There that we, you know, we have a quarterly review or. In that, or an annual review, that we, you know, will we do a, a sit-down in here instead?
Well, we did that last year, Rich. They came to us last year and said, this is what we're going to, um, you know, this is the money that we've raised. These are the things that we would like, what, and they came and asked us, what would you like?
Mm-hmm.
This year, they didn't come to the board, so, and that's my point is, who's the library? You know.
But in the past, they didn't come to.
Because I only, because, you know, I'm only going by my own experience, right?
Past, it was always the li- the librarians put forward what their wishes.
Okay.
So, and, yeah, and and being new to this process too, um, I came in and said. Let's do a wish list and they were excited. And so I didn't realize that they met with you and then. Gwen said, well, they're supposed to be with board, and so, um, so that's how the whole process came by, but definitely it can improve, so.
So why don't we do and put in here that they, that they, we have an annual review?
Yeah, right, yeah.
We have the annual, and we have an annual review that we present our wish list and they present theirs. Because they have things that they definitely wanted to use the money for, right? And and very valid reasons why they want to, you know, how they want to spend the money. And I think it's really important, the ones that are raising this money. We want that, we want them to absolutely use and and see that we're using the money in the way that they really want it spent in. So I just think, I just want that communication to be really clear.
And I think that's gotta be clear. I mean, it was one thing, I, you know, the friends and I worked with, with. You know, what the librarians were saying that they wanted to have, and so I think we also have to get the board input, so. Maybe it's something we do like every September as we prepare for budget, it's gotta be during that time period, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, because I need to put it so I can keep it on track.
Okay.
Because as September is when they give the, they give the check, so that's, uh, that's usually the time that they have another quarterly. Meeting, so let's see, we just had. Yep.
So, so you could ask them when the best time for them to to present to us, because I think that before the budget is great. I don't remember when their annual, when their meeting is, the quarterly meeting, and they make those decisions.
Right.
So we really should meet with them, um. Before they make their final decisions, take it to their board, right? So that we've got some input on what they're looking at doing.
And and we talk, we talk at except for, so it's kind of loosely talked about there, you know, what are you thinking, what's about that? But it'd be nice for them to come into a presentation.
For sure, I mean, I'm just overwhelmed by what they give to the library. It's amazing.
It really is amazing.
And the, this space was really helped. You know, uh, a couple things off, one, we opened, we say, opened up. Uh, book sales far before anybody else, and so people were coming. From my, from all around the, the. Oh, books sale, I haven't been to a book sale in two years, I can't.
Yeah.
And, um, then the field, the. We have the space that can, you know, accommodate a much larger than we did when we were in the. Telephone booth, um, trying to sell books, um, there, so I think it was. But the other thing is that, you know, we have, we have a very active, well, like, friends group.
Oh, they're phenomenal.
Today, and uh, you've gotta expect that there's, you know. A, that there's gonna be changes over time, you know, that, that, there'll be ebb and flow of leadership and. Um, you know, the library and uh, and and the friends group, so. The level of participation, you know, may vary over time. But, but setting up a, a policy there, understanding, you know, and helping encourage each other. To be our best selves.
By having that first book sale, you know? It is amazing how many of those people still come to this book sale. There are several people who come from Grand Rapids.
Yeah.
It's a great book sale. It really is.
Yeah, and it's just like, they're like, because the one guy, he was doing the thing and and they said something, then he goes, oh. No, I'm not gonna try for the raffle. He goes, what if I don't come back next time? And he goes, I come from Grand Rapids for this, and he comes. And he is not a bookseller. He is not a bookseller. He's visiting family and he sets up his visiting family for when we have our books.
Yes, we're, we're, we're a destination.
Yeah, we are a destination, yes, uh, it's just, yeah, amazing.
So what I'm hearing is another draft, which I I think should take this back to the friends and kind of give them.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, tell them that the board looked at it, and this is what we just wanna add, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, overall, it's great, and I think it's important and it's, and it's, you know, something that's necessary.
If I just.
Well, that's the second point.
Okay, I got it.
So uh, friends wish list quote reviews, and I apologize for the lateness, late, you know, this coming through at the last minute of the day. Uh, the friends, uh. Here's their wish list, and so there's just a couple of things on here that. I had reached out this morning to Jen and say, you know, I think I probably need to bring this. Do I need to bring this to you? And so, uh, this, yeah, let's, let's, let's go, let's bring the quotes. So there are two, and one is for a laser engraver. Uh, and one is a glow forge and the other one is the make block. Uh, the make block is actually the one that we want to go with.
So, so the, the wish list calls for one, but we're looking at the other.
Where's make block?
Right, I had, I actually put glow forge on there originally and had an original price on there of ten thousand. Um, this is your scene.
Yeah, but these numbers did change, yeah, I noticed.
Okay, yeah, so, um. One of the biggest things with the laser engraver that we. We really wanted, I, Emily and I have been working on this together and she brought glow forge to me. We both know glow forge very well. And of course, because it's glow forge, uh, but the one thing that this doesn't do, which is the one thing I really, really wanted. Was to be able to do tumblers and things that, you know, like maybe a lime bottle or engraving like that. And this, with all of this, did not do that. Um, this one, the make block does. Um, and so. That, uh, and along with other, other um, aspects of it. That, um, with the conveyor feed as well, so you can get much longer items in there. Um, and so, other, and the price is much better. I mean, the, granted, the prices on these, I have been coming down over the years, unless you're ordering a glow forge. Um, but. Yeah, and this is um, getting high reviews.
Is there a maintenance contract on this?
Yeah, it's got a two-year warranty on it. That's the X tool care.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So. It's, it does what we need it to do and it's a good place. Emily's been watching all sorts of YouTube videos on it and investigating all aspects of it, and she's in love. Good, she is, she should.
You know what? She could do a demo for the board.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know how to use all this equipment that, is this gonna go on the IDL app?
Yes, it is.
Okay. It'd really be nice to know how to use all the equipment in the.
You can do almost anything in there.
You absolutely.
Yeah, that's the core.
So, what is this, what, 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 like, size is it?
The dimensions?
Oh, the laser box?
I know it's not that big. Because we can learn to.
Uh, it actually just, that's pretty amazing. I'm looking at it online, Rich, and it looks sort of like a fax machine. It looks like an old-fashioned fax machine.
You know, I had, I was trying to figure out how to describe it, and then it's like, oh, yep, yep, yep.
Yes, it's not very big. Except that it's got this smoke purifier, right?
Yeah, they all have to have some sort of filter. And even with that, you know, if you're doing wood, I, I, I remember at Novi, you could still tell when we were doing wood. I mean, I went to.
Sure.
Yeah, someone fired you in the library.
Okay, Rich.
Yeah.
Um, it is thirty nine and a half inches by twenty five by ten. Okay. So it's forty inches by forty inches long by two feet deep, ten inches high, ten and a half inches high.
Okay.
Maximum carrying speed is six hundred. Millis, is it milliseconds on here, must be? And um, it's light, it only weighs forty five grams, kilograms.
We're talking kilograms.
Yeah. It's.
Twenty pounds or something.
Two point two, yeah.
All right. So, how long are these tables? Six feet. Okay. Which is seventy two inches, so it's gonna be about that long. And it's gonna be about that wide and about that high. So we have, we have room for him on the kids, in the tables, okay?
They'll make room.
I think it's exciting.
I do too.
That's why we've an eyeball on some.
As soon as she says wine bottle, I thought, oh.
Well, it had me at one. I said, if the glow forge doesn't do that, you're gonna have to find something else, because. I just know how popular that was. We just, people, oh, it's my anniversary, I want to engrave. I just know how popular that was, we just, people, oh, it's my anniversary, I want to engrave. On tumblers.
Well, nice, um, if, if there's no more questions about it, I'll make the motion to, um, for, to approve the purchase of the Make Block. And X tool P two.
Okay. Give you a second. Well, Emily's gonna be so happy.
Oh, my goodness. I, I, I thought she was in love when she got married, I don't know. So, speaking of love, um, our, our friends, uh, came to me and said, you know, we would really like. Um, five more of your program tables. And. A to help with book sale, um, B to help with, you know, any type of program we have with tables out. You know, having in the lobby, if we're already having tables in here, and oftentimes we have to borrow from the IDL lab. Uh, for different items like that, but they really wanted these, and I said, you know what, if we're gonna get tables, I really want these. Um, so asked staff, where did we get these? And it was Library Design, and I thought, well, it's been a while, but I did reach out, um. There and they, they can get them, so. Um. That's why you're only seeing one quote, because these are high quality.
They're the same ones we have.
Yeah, anything else is gonna be close, just as expensive, I mean. Uh, but they want them stat, so while I can't guarantee them stat. Uh, because it can take a while, I can at least get them as close to what we have.
But we, we want them to match what we have in the library today.
Correct.
Yeah, we don't want things.
Well, and they are great tables, I can't tell you how nice it is to flip them up, stack them.
And where will these extra ones go? Do we have room for them?
Hmm, we're gonna make some more room, I've got some extra tables over here that are not these, they're, um. I don't know where they're from, actually, it could be the old building, um, I do have another storage closet, so you guys put in enough storage in here. But we're gonna make some jigsaw room and figure it out. Um, so that was my own concern is, do we really have room for more table? Well, sometimes we have a problem with the tables we have now, but we do need them, so we'll make do.
Okay.
Yeah. Most of the time, we have tables out anyway for programs, so it's not usually an issue. About, they're about double since in five years.
Really?
Yeah, they were reaching around seven, eight hundred.
Now, that's how it goes. If there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to accept the vote from Library Design Assistance for five tables for the friends.
Look at us get things done, we're gonna have so many people happy with us.
Okay, so the next quote you're gonna see on here are, um. For the cameras. And the, the thing with the cameras is, and as, as I mentioned in my email. Um, you were, were adding on this, we started with ADT and, um. We went to them to see what would it be to add. Really add back, so what originally was quoted were most of the majority of the cameras. They just lessened it to save money. Um, so I'm gonna hand it over now to Eighties, so she can kind of review with you, um, the proposal. And answer some questions.
The majority of the cameras that we have added on. Um, are blind spots that we have right now. Um, that are not. When you walk around, the wild rooms do have cameras, but they only point in one direction. For example, in the teen room, there is one, but it's looking out towards the. The doorway. So there's a whole blind spot in the whole room. Same with, um, in the adult section, number eight, that whole back wall, it would be the very end of the. End of looking that way, there's nothing looking towards back, we have five table, four tables back there that are totally. Staff cannot see, but this will open that up. Um.
Well, can I ask you a question about like the teens, because if you look at current camera locations, right? Number seven says it's teens, and you said it's looking out, and then you look at proposed camera locations, there's only one camera, it's number three. What's the difference in, in those, is, is, are we buying a new camera in teens? And what are we doing with the old cameras?
They're still saying these are additional, so that we get more of a view of the room, a lot of them are very just, the one in here. Is up there, it looks at this room this way. The one in teens becomes the way they're developing this, we have blind spots in there that the staff cannot see. And the camera does not pick up, so the whole tables against the windows.
So there's no way to move that camera that's in there today to actually accommodate, but it's not a very big space.
Right, that one turns out towards the entrance to the teen room and covers. A wide variety, but it does not cover anything against the windows where there's four tables. So there could be people sitting there.
Which you can't see.
That you cannot see, you can't see that from anywhere in the library.
So who monitors these?
There, it's always continually going in the IT room. So, um, we cut back quite a few when we did the building for cause, we also did not have any. We did not have a patio, so the outdoor patio is our addition, we have added a. Staff accident out there, we had a patron accident out there.
So we only have two out there right now.
We have no, no cameras outdoors.
Well, it says current camera locations eleven and six.
Those are the very back of the building.
Okay.
I'm talking, I'm sorry, the J patio and the adult patio. The juvenile patio and the adult patio do not exist. Um, so there's nothing on that half of the. Eleven and number six under current cameras, take, um, show the whole rear of the building.
Okay.
So, yeah, we said, we've got the rear, we've got the staff side, we've got a little bit of the. Well, not the drive up, but a little bit near the book return area, but it's more pointing again towards the staff area and of course the front. Um, but, uh. The number nine would be able to look out to see what's coming up to the, who's coming up to the drive up.
That area is not covered at all by cameras, whether it's. They're pointing in different directions, so some of the, a lot of blind spots in areas that will be helpful, that there's patron interaction. None of the reference stuff are covered right now by a camera. The circulation, that's this. But this will also help that if there is an interaction where the staff. Needs backup, like, and we do get recordings, I can go back in time and look at these recordings. This will also be helpful if we do have an interaction or a patron, we had a patron. Break, we'll say break, we'll say nicey, and they did report instead a children's department, fairly large piece of toys. And it was in a total blind spot, I couldn't see who it was, I saw a couple heads walking through, but I could say they were the ones who destroyed a piece of. Um, children's toys. Um, so a lot of these are filling in with blind spots. Um, and in areas where we could have some problems and that are just not stable by the staff. And that, and this is not a problem that we see, I can go back, rewind and reuse them. I don't use them that often to have to go back, but I've been able to, you know, unfortunately with a former, um. Contract company that we contracted with, I was able to say, hey, you know, your staff person didn't show up with, it was the cleaning company. Your staff person, I see them pull up, I see them going to the building, I see them going back to their car and sitting in their car for two hours.
Oh.
So, and I was able to report that back and say, they're on camera. So, but, um, a lot of this is protection also, um. For proposed cameras, one and two in the children's department, that whole area where the computers are and the videos, there's no coverage. There, the juvenile partners, that had covered that number one would be protection for them and out looking, so a lot of them are just. Um, telescoping out more areas where we did cut from previous.
Okay. So, and so the, they'll fall under, um, any kind of, it, because it says there's no monthly fee. So we don't have a, a license fee to pay on these, uh. So do we pay a monitoring fee at all today? Is there any kind of fee that we can pay, and so this will just be included in it, you know, there's no, nothing extra for these?
I'm really excited about the athletes of the patios, I, as soon as we got patios, I started and. The staff member who fell, Craig planned it.
Oh, I'm really, yeah, if, if the patios especially, um, you know, were somewhat isolated, I think it, you know.
That will also help us, um, because as we've had, especially before the board did, built the skateboards.
Right.
So if the skateboard is without their very heavy things, and there was damage done. Or they put themselves, that also helps protect us for some of those outside areas, and that's also number nine, because it's. Going to be in the drive up window room looking out, so if there is a bad interaction.
That's important.
Right now, the angle of the camera, we just don't, we need that area, you see a little bit on this one and a little bit on this one, this is gonna help protect the staff also. If somebody throws some, worst case scenario, somebody throws something at the window because they're. Um, mad at the staff. It's happened at other places, where somebody puts something in the book drop as it's going in and out. So a lot of this is just, you know, for staff protection and just for paper protection.
Right.
I walked in the building both four times with the, um, sales representative. April walked in, and then I talked to each staff member, um, department head. I talked with Emily, I talked with Kim, and then April and I talked with the whole viewpoint, and we've looked at the cameras, sat down, looked at the cameras and. Where are we really lacking that we can see the most good and. At the most coverage, you know, that will help us, and where did we cut before that we can add back in? I think we cut our cameras in half what was originally planned when we.
From the, uh.
It was, uh, budgeted for. Was it for fund balance? It was, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we had it in the fund balance that we pulled, Rich. Yeah, can you bring up the fund balance?
The other question is. What did we leave out? What? Um. If you go through this and you, okay, there's these areas, these areas, and then, so. Where's the, where did we leave out that? If anything, you're just like, okay.
You mean, as far as like, you think that there's any more that we could add, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, but you, you, you were on events about whether it was, 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 was the last thing you dropped, maybe, or.
No.
You may not have.
Not really, I, I mean, we walked through, we looked, uh, what we currently had, we checked views, we walked the building, we talked to staff. And so we just went for it. I mean, that's, that's.
The last one you had.
The last.
The last camera that you added.
The last camera that we added?
We haven't added anything since we built the building.
No, 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 that we're in the, at the, Ken.
Even the proposed.
Yeah, and that's all the, the five ones are ones that we need. I guess it would be number nine in looking out, because I mean, all of them are blind areas right now. And number nine is a blind area, of all ten, all of them are truly needed. In my opinion, you know, but.
I, I think these are true blind spots.
So, um. For the, uh, for nine. Um. What interactions will we be able to capture there? So. Um, so that's a drive.
So it's inside pointing out, so you can see as a car pulls up. You'd be able to see, um. Through the window.
You can see short people not being able to reach it. I'm one of those people that always struggle.
Also, number nine would be protection, because the book drops are open twenty-four seven. So if somebody did put something, even if we're closed the door, if the fire door is closed. But that would also be like, whoa, something came in, can we tell who drove by?
Yeah, yeah.
Together with the other existing cameras, but that would be a definite, this person drove by.
Timestamp.
A timestamp for this specific area.
Yeah, it is, it's in the fund balance and it.
What would be the?
What was it quoted, what, what did we estimate?
Eight, interior exterior camera expansion, eighteen thousand.
And this came in at sixteen something, right? And that includes all waiting and. That's the total, I, I.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions? Okay. You don't have any other questions, Rich?
Well, we said we have a motion and we can.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the ADT proposal as presented for, um, security camera. Um, quotes for ten additional cameras.
Who said, who seconded?
Okay, thank you.
So was there, uh, some, any discussion we wanted to happen?
No, I appreciate that, um, this was very helpful.
It, as I said to April, I have to give big props to Emily and Heather for one showing me how to do it, and then letting me go through it, make some, make some, go back.
Oh, I thought ADT did this for you.
It's not.
Because I was gonna say, why didn't?
I did that so that we could see exactly where everything was and where.
Why didn't ADT put an overlay, so we saw, okay, well, this is where the cameras are, now this is where the extra cameras are gonna be? I actually thought it came with the ADT.
I don't see the information, like start date, finish date.
Or install? No, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far because of, you wonder wait till it's approved.
Is there, is there a date on this for quote that would expire? Well, it's only, it's, it's got, it's got today's date on it as a nineteen.
Yeah.
I, it's gonna have at least, uh, thirty to sixty day window, right?
Yeah.
For acceptance.
Yeah, I've got another question.
Okay, so Eric made the motion.
I seconded.
He seconded, you made the motion. That's right, that's why I write it down.
Second Christmas or whatever.
We need, we need to understand who's.
No, I just said, I can't see some things together, like I said, we couldn't, not that we would take a token. Label the table to somebody that you all lost, but at least we would have known who to, and future much, but I couldn't.
Well, in days of litigation, I think any blind spots is a bad idea.
It's just protection all around, for example, hatred.
Yeah, I mean, really break the label, Michael.
Yeah, yeah, that was a while ago.
But that also started the energy for the living blind spot.
Yeah.
I, this isn't a site, but I don't understand why everyone doesn't just assume they're being recorded on video, I, I don't understand.
You guys sign on the door, by the way, that say you are being, there are videos on front, so we are also protected of that.
But it's been the norm for so long that you don't even think about it.
Right.
Right.
You know, because everywhere, you're right, everywhere you go, you're recorded, but you don't really think about the fact that. Where's the cameras? Hi.
The subtle move towards the surveillance.
I used to, I used to wave it, uh, every security camera I went by, and now it's just too many.
I did the same thing, but I wouldn't have waved.
Well, mine was waving, it was smiling and everything, yeah.
Right, so the next is the uh, door access?
Yep, so, um, when I installed the night lock, um, systems on the doors, um, it came up about having the doors be, um, fobbed. And so I thought, yep, I, I agree. I come from a building that had fobbed doors in it. Uh, it was very, it was more than convenient. It was, it felt good to, you know, fob through and know that when the door shuts behind you, it's locked. Right now, none of our staff doors in this building are locked. Um, anyone can just, could just walk through at any, at any time. Um, and of course, in an absolute emergency, that would be even more critical. Um, so got the quote, obviously, I did throw a budget at it, so it is there, um, I, if you guys were gonna ask about that.
Yeah, it was the very first thing on the fund balance.
Yeah, so, um, thoughts, uh, we've got two companies here.
Well, one of them isn't actually, anything over twenty thousand dollars is supposed to be a request for proposal. And this is not, this is not a proposal.
And just, yeah, and to update you on that, I did reach out to our, our, the guy for this. And I said, you know, hey, I'm going up, taking this to the door to show them, and I said the other company kind of did a little bit more of a proposal. Um, I said, what can, you know, can you, oh, yeah, we can turn that around for you. Get that for you tomorrow and this is what came. And the only difference was is the word installation was folded and put enlarged. So I really did not have time to sit there and kind of go back to the guy and say, that's not really what I, 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 what I think of when I say proposal. But, um.
Well, and actually, I mean, this was, the, um, the TARCS list here was a little bit more understandable than the other vendor, um. So, you know, some of these funding needs are like twenty-five hundred, what, what do we need twenty-five hundred of? What is getting the talent there? A what? Oh, in my.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading this and I, and I, and I read an awful lot of quotes for, um, technical installations and I'm like, I can't even tell you what this is. I, I, I have no idea what we're buying here. Well, the first, the first twenty-five hundred, we're buying twenty-five hundred straight jackets. I'm like, okay, there's no really explanation of what's going on here. These aren't through proposals. This is, is my point. Um, the one that I do understand is a monthly fee on vendor two, and I'm not happy with that.
Uh, you, you're talking about the ADT?
Yes, very unhappy about that price, because it's just gonna continue to go up. And what are we getting for a hundred and sixty dollars a month? Um, I, I don't like that at all. Um, so I'm like, okay, what are we really, I, I'm not opposed to the key fobs. Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna make that clear, I'm not, um. I, I work in another building that we just said, and exterior, all the interior doors, we have to use a key on. Um, so then I'm thinking, oh, do we just do, uh, um, a keypad? And I see, and we do have a few, and we just do two keys. You know, people are able to press the button, you're able to use your fingers a lot easier than you do grabbing a key fob also. So I'm, but I, as I said, I'm not opposed to this, and we put it in the fund balance and we approved the fund balance. I'm not comfortable with the lack of detail on these proposals and what we're really buying.
So, uh, and let me draw your attention too, because we did do it for eight doors, which includes these doors to this program room. Now, that is not technically staff. That was, that was more for convenience, because when you're bringing in lots of program materials, it's just gonna be easier to just fob and go in. So that can be taken off the quote. Um, I, so I can do that on the next one. I can go back to them both and say, you know, look, we need to see instead of, as an example, twenty-five hundred twenty-two slash six STROES, whatever that is, we need you to say what it is. Is that what you're kind of looking for?
Write a true proposal, show, you know, they're both gonna have brochures.
Right.
They're both gonna have brochures and what these things do. Okay, but they don't spell out what we're buying. And I'm like, what, like Karen said, you know, twenty-five hundred straight jackets.
I can tell you, one of the differences is these are a little bit more cabling and connected, because they will be connected. This one we have to do as wifi.
Okay, and that's what I was gonna ask you, and, uh, this one.
Um, also because there's no electric near any of the doors. That's what we have to do wifi, because this does not integrate with our current system, because it is an independent competitor.
Okay.
To this one, so they would not be showing technology notices.
So this one, this one's all gonna be all new wire?
Not new wire, they'd also park those, some of them would have wifi.
No, we don't have, but we don't have fob today. Mine, we don't have key fob today, so what's?
Not at the back doors, at the entrances we do.
Okay.
These are internal staff doors.
But there's gonna be an awful lot of wire if we're doing wire, and, and you're telling me that this one is wireless? Okay, so.
Derek, Derek.
I'm, I'm getting down into the, into the weeds here. My preference would be wireless. I have wireless in my home and I've had it for eighteen years and not have, had a problem with it. Um, and this one, the, um, from what I understood on the, on the, um, license fee on this, it's considerably cheaper and it's a flat rate than doing the, um, monthly service fee on this. That, um, and, but you said this is for, this is what our monthly rate would be for five years?
Yes, the Vercata, um, I mean, the Vercata will continue to, um, and they can offer you a three year, a five year, or a ten year, but it's, you're still gonna have to renew, you're still gonna have to keep going with it.
Right, because, because, because it's, it's got a software application with it.
Yeah.
And that's why you have to pay for that fee, right? But the, but what are we getting for a hundred and sixty dollars a month?
Versus a hundred and sixty a, a year.
Well, this is actually, I think it came to, um.
Ninety-one dollars a month.
Yeah.
No, it's a three-year door, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's, so, um. Yes, thirty-six months, it's, it's ninety-one dollars a month versus a hundred and sixty dollars a month. Both, I think, are a little pricey, but, but what are we getting for?
Sure.
What are we getting out of that? You know, what, what does it cover? Does that door license, does it cover if, um, one of these units fails? You know, like, um, like the unit that's on the wall, if that fails in that three years, are we get?
Do they come in?
Do they come in and replace that?
Yeah, the ADT proposal seems to imply that some of the material or some of the equipment is still ADT owned. So that possibly, when we had ADT, that was the thing they were doing, was they would, they were basically charging us to rent their equipment.
Yeah, that's.
So that, that's just, April, I just had a lot of questions, I'm like, what are we buying?
So let me get with them and have them flush this out a little bit more to you and bring it back next month.
Sure.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm absolutely not opposed, I just want to know what we're paying for.
I mean, I'm sure you forget the substance, we're not, this is the local sale or the local installer, it is not, he's just installing the equipment that Vercata owns or supplies.
Right.
He is out of ownership, he has his own company, and that's why it doesn't say he's the locals representative. So this could also change, however, because if he retires, then we have to find their new local.
Okay.
Installer.
Right.
So that is.
Well, I would think though, that this is, but this is by this. So you're saying if this person, we, we're signing a three-year contract with this person, they might not be here for years.
By God, I would hope so.
Yeah, you know, it comes to your, something, so. It'll be around.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you said.
But this guy's a, after, after comparison, this is the local installer is contracted with Vercata, he doesn't work, he's not, he also does his own thing. He's the local Vercata representative for installation.
Yeah, they, yeah, so right here, they're twenty-five years of service. Yeah, so it doesn't really matter who the salesperson or the installer is. Yeah, so I just had a lot of questions in what we're buying and what we're gonna get and what we're getting for our money every month.
Happy to look into it and have them flush it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Let's see.
And I'll feel good about this, but being in sales, I, I would love to be like, do some, here, send each, send each of them the other person's quote. Then tell me the money, your deal is better. That's what I used to do with people in sales is give them each the other quote, it's the public institution anyway, your, your details are public. So send it to the other person, say, why should we take yours over this?
It was very interesting working with the sales rep who is out of Arizona for the Vercata, but the installer and I walked the building. So it kind of an interesting, you know, discussion with this coming.
So, uh, sounds like we're gonna take all this for.
So we did last month.
Now, I'll have a paper here, so.
We're close to being done.
Now we're on to the, the end of the, uh, new business, old business.
So I thought you'd talk about that. That's what I thought he was talking about.
For library boards, new discussion.
All right. So are you looking for who you want on each of these committees? Who wants to be on committees?
Um, yeah, I just know, I, who wants to be on what, um, I, I, I'm gonna make one statement that, um, kinda, you know, if you could, if you can choose people, of course, I'm not choosing people, but I, I guess I would force Gwen to be on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, everyone who's been on, either on finance or on policy or, you know, thank you to Strategic Planning Committee, I mean, obviously, there's not really gonna be anything more going on with that, at least for a couple of years, um, has done a great job. I just need to know where everyone wants to go and what they're gonna do.
Well, without Jen here, it's sort of.
Yeah, and I, I do kind of feel that way too.
But we also do, I, I really believe we need a building, uh, a building committee. Truly, so, um, and one of the things, Rich, that I was, you know, I think we brought up, but we never really discussed it very much, is do we wanna bring some outside, um, people outside of the library board, and, yeah, experts in fields into some of this. So, for example, like the building, um, you know, there's several architects in the community. Do we wanna bring in an architect that could, you know, and ask them if they could sit on, on the, the, um, committee? Um, there's a person that used to be in here in Valley Schools, and now she's managing a grant for Oakland County Road Commission, you know, um, and she's got a strong, and she's managing the finances of that. Um, she happened to say to me one day, I've asked some extra time, I thought she might be really great, because she knows grants, which should be a great person to have, um, the finance committee. So do we wanna bring people in to some of these committees to give us some professional guidance? You know, we've discussed it, but we've just sort of. And, and not.
Yeah, and I want to, um, look into that and see, you know, what are the ins and outs? You know, have other, talk to some other directors and, and how has that worked? What is the approach? Um, and also with Library of Michigan, to see, you know, how does that, how, how are we gonna work that out? I've already investigated a little bit, just casually, the ambassador program, um, which is not for this year, but I just kind of want to get my, wrap my head around it, so, um, along those same lines, yeah, are there, how does, how does that work? And so, um, but in the meantime, I don't think that should stop us from getting going on, yeah, definitely a building committee, because when you look at things like this where, you know, it's, it's Amy and I, which is fine, it's staff, but it would, it would, you know, sometimes it's nice to just kind of have a, have a board member or have a board committee to say, you know, what do you think about this? Or, you know, if we had been, had the building committee, it could have been, you know, we need to have this more fleshed out, rather than coming here in another time, and again, we for another time. So, yeah, I think we could just at least, you know, see where we, where we wanna be on us.
So I would. Having committees for is relatively impressive, so, you know, we essentially have a building committee, uh, we'll be building. Um, but not, but not formally, every, as we, you know, just the, the, the people that were highly involved and had the rest of us. I was, I was, you know, one of the bests.
Well, and there's things that are gonna come up now that the building's five years old, that we really need to plan for.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 so, so, but I was saying that, how, how we work with committees is, um, I think it's a good idea, I think it's worked well, and we should continue. Um, but we're still kind of feeling our way around with this committee. You know, that, so my, my thought is, yeah, to form the committees, form the board subcommittees. Um, and let each committee, you know, come back with, yeah, we'd like to get, you know, this, here's where, here's the, the type of external that we'd like to include and, and sort of take it through on each, uh, area of, uh,
Okay.
The, of the scope of the, of the committee, so I could see finance and building, uh, there's natural policy maybe less.
I agree with you, I don't think we need to, we shouldn't be sending somebody else outside, unless we were fortunate enough to get a lawyer that would do that. You know, you know, um, you know, what do they call it? What's the? Pro bono, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, but I think Rich is right, we need the committee and then bring in the outside, because the committee needs to know what they're gonna do and how they wanna go about it, and then, okay, we could use some professional help.
And then there's collective approval of any given individual.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Committee, for sure, yeah, for sure, Karen.
Because if not, then what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? And then the person goes, I don't wanna be a part of this, they don't know what they're gonna do. You know, they want. Yeah, so should we just, people say what they're interested in or not interested in? Yeah. Well, I, obviously, I'll still stay on finance committee, um, I, I, I would prefer that Jen or Rich still continue, you know, Jen's on the finance committee today, I prefer one, another one of the people that are signers on the committee, uh, you know, for the checks to be on that committee as well. So Jen's not here to speak to her for herself, but it, it needs to be you or Jen. And then it'd be nice to have another person on the board that was on that committee. So.
I, I could look at it as a learning experience.
I think that would be wonderful.
And you probably won't get a whole lot of it out of me, because the, the library specific process is obviously very new to me, but I would be.
But it's new to me too. That somebody who hasn't been doing it.
Yes.
Is on to learn. And Jen's been around a long time, so, and Rich, you have, that's why I said you or Jen, you should be on it, really.
Yeah, that's really helpful. I think you'll like it, or the one thing that's really nice about it is, um, each month, we, um, I'm able to update QuickBooks the previous month, so you get a good view of, you know, what's being spent out of each fund. Um, and how does that chalk up to the past couple of years? Um, and so it's, it's kind of nice.
Mm-hmm, okay, we just meet once a month. Okay. On Zoom.
I just didn't think.
Yeah, it's all Zoom, so that's really, you know, very convenient.
Eric and I, and we had Jake, but he's not here anymore. Policy is something that I'm interested in, so I am.
China's.
Okay, so are you two staying on policy?
I love the policy committee.
You do?
It fits the wordsmithing part of me.
I can say I don't love it, but I will stay on it.
I would agree with that, because Eric has, uh, really word, and he's so fast at it too. I, I'll say, well, I'm, he, he's just, you, you see him on Zoom and you don't even realize that he's typing something, it's in chat. Right there.
Yeah, I mean, and my preference would not be on, on policy, but I think three people should be on it. Okay, so that's. So your preference would be to not be on it?
I, I did policy like ten years ago or something.
Life's full policy was Rich and.
It was me and, and I was the only board member who was, you know, Larry and.
Probably Denise.
Denise, yeah.
A little librarian, man.
So I, I, and, and I had that, you know, so if you got one wordsmith there, you know, we wouldn't. So I, I already, and, and I had that, you know, so if you got one wordsmith there, you know, we wouldn't. We probably wouldn't get a one.
Okay, and obviously, I can't speak for Jen, I would say that I, she's been a tremendous help with building stuff, I know that's her passion.
Yeah.
Um but we'll see what she says.
Okay, I, I bet that's the one she wants, though, you're right, but, yeah, you're right, we can't speak for her.
And if you need a second one on, on the building committee, I can volunteer for that as well.
So that would. That would probably. I'm glad to do one, any of them, but I want to.
And do we need three on each?
I think it's really helpful.
Because then it's, because I'm just wondering, cause that does kind of stretch us sort of then.
If we're doing two, it does, um but it.
I understand that each of them.
Jake and I were both on finance and um policy, then I thought. When Jake was on both and we had three people, I thought it was good, especially because sometimes. Somebody can't be there, and you still haven't had three people, you have April and two other people, that's. So I don't know, what's your thought, Eric?
Yeah, I, I kind of feel the same way as, like, I, 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 I do agree with you, though, that you can stretch a group of, what, five, six? Pretty thinly.
Right.
And I know I don't have a ton of extra time to be able to devote to another committee, uh if I were gonna join a different one, so I don't know.
That's why I was thinking too, outside.
Yeah, I mean.
Influent would be good.
I think, I think the third one would be, outside of policy would be tough.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think we want anybody outside of policy. That's gotta be within.
So maybe start policy, uh uh, uh building with Jen and I.
Okay, so.
Karen said that she was.
Yeah.
Jen and. Rich.
We should not get Karen for policy. We're grabbing Karen for policy.
Yeah, I'm taking, I'm on policy. Right now, I'm only on one.
I think the um acoustic tiles are, are gonna be one of the next things that I would say, let's take a look at for the building. Um so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, we were rich, the. You end up with agenda, anything we missed, anything else that we need to cover?
There's nothing more we need.
Just a quick question, so um. Do you want me to just take this, the um committee and talk to Jen? To see what she wants.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't have to bring this back as a business again?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, we all know ourselves.
We can just put the following, people volunteered for these committees. Yeah, so once you know, I'll stick it in.
And I will be reaching out then to, you know, see if times, like, we have a good current policy time that works. For Gwen and Eric, we'll see if it works for you.
Yeah, like. I'm good all the time.
Yeah, we usually do the Tuesday at five.
Oh, except Tuesday, but no. I just realized Thursday evenings. No, no good on Thursday evenings, so.
Okay.
Big, big stop on Thursday.
Okay.
So, okay, there's one, one motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All, oh, any discussion?
Okay, so I had Eric. And then Gwen.
Eight fifty nine.
So all in favor?
Hi.
All votes. The eyes have it, thank you everybody.
All right, thank you.
So there, there's.